I haven't heard anything from Kyle. I do not.
Okay, we had a busy week, month, three weeks of sewer issues, sewer-related issues. Starting with a break in the sewer main to old clay tile down in Willow Creek. It was actually in the ball field and it was fairly shallow, so it was a pretty easy fix. Let's see, that was Molder Excavating came out and did the fix for us, so they cut out like a twenty-foot section and replaced it with PVC. And Nelson came out to camera that line to confirm the break before, and then they were there to help pump out while the process was going on, so there's a couple invoices for those. Yeah, that just is one of those things where, yeah, it happens and just kinda... Luckily, it was on the top side of the main and not the bottom side where it would've leaked out and caused an issue within our drinking water area, so that's nice, but the break itself was not. And then during the process, a few things were noticed at the main lift station. There was a seal alarm on pump one, and Tri-State pump came out to look at it, they pulled it up, checked it out, put it back in, it ran fine for about a day. It threw the same alarm, so they came back out and really checked it out, and there was some bearings that were bad on it. So that's the other quote estimate that you see from Tri-State for the pumps, which include the motor rebuild kit, the O-rings, and then labor in the shop, so they actually took it back. Last week, they actually took it back and fixed it all. It's back in there again, but we were running one pump in there for, I suppose, about twelve days, which is not ideal, but it worked, and luckily, there wasn't any major issues. There was one little alarm that happened, but it resolved itself. And then down at the Sheeler Lift Station, I don't know if this quote's in here or not, because I just got it. They came and put in a new UPC, which is essentially a battery backup for when we lose power. So the first of this month, I checked on that lift station, and there was no power to the panels. There was actually, everything was blank, and there was an alarm screaming, but it would never, it didn't call out, so I wasn't aware of the issue. So I figured for about two, maybe three days, that lift station wasn't running. So when I actually kicked it back on, there was, um, the wet wells are about forty feet deep. There was twenty-two feet of water in the wet well, and the pumps hadn't ran for, like I said, about three days. And it didn't alarm out, didn't call out, didn't tell me there was an issue. Automatic Systems came out and checked it out and said that if we would've had this backup in there, it probably would've. I also asked them to do the control panel upgrade, which we've done in the past, which would allow it to dial out. That was Kent who came out. He is waiting to hear back from Arvig, so I'm hoping by the next meeting, I'll have a quote in hand for the panel for both the Heritage and the Sheeler Lift Stations, because they're essentially twins. And if we do one, we should probably do the other, just 'cause, I mean, if one's going bad, the other one's probably not too far behind, especially with both neighborhoods filling up as quickly as they are, and that one's actually full. So those are the few issues I've had. Like I said, I'm still waiting on the quote back from Automatic Systems. And then, I don't know if there's anything else. Do you have any questions on any of that stuff? It's a lot, there is a lot that just, it was just- And for some reason, it was the sewer side this fall, as opposed to, which I think, we're getting balls taken care of, but I don't, I don't know. So when Nelson was out to camera that line, we, they couldn't get the whole line camered. So when I talked to Dave, our engineer at SEH, he said, "This is one of those things that if we're gonna do a grant in the future, let's put this on there to be lined." Since we know there's already, there was already a break, and there's some cracking going on, if we line it, it'll give us a little bit of an extension on its life, especially since it being clay tile. So that's gonna, should be on the back of our minds when we maybe do something with Linden Street. I mean, there's, I'm gonna guess there's more that's gonna pop up, but it's a talking point for the future. And if we can get a loan for it or a grant or something of the nature, it's probably wise. This work is our, this is already done. Yeah, these were- Arvig were waiting on to do the control panels themselves. I don't know why it wasn't calling out. When we checked the phone lines, I had both of them, the phone lines worked and everything. So I don't know why the dialer wasn't calling out to say, "Hey, a pump's not working," or, I mean, two days is a long time to go without pumps running. So I don't know why that happened.
Um, that can be at the next meeting, because I just got the bill today. The Arvig information, Tammy, that's in the packet, is actually for the compost site, not for the lift station.
Oh, yeah, that's confusing. Yeah, any questions on the sewer stuff before we move on to the compost stuff? Okay, so for the compost site, the gate and everything is all live. It's still open, we gotta make up some signs and get everything, like our ducks in a row here, to start handing out the cards.
We were thinking next season's.
Yeah, just 'cause there's a lot of, right, a lot of work left, we still gotta make up signs and everything. But the gate and the access cards, everything is ready to go. All I need to do is push one thing in, and the gate will close, and then it'll be ready to go. This internet is gonna be helpful for us for tracking, and if we wanna install cameras, like an actual camera, security system out there, as opposed to the trail cameras that we have out there. Batteries fill up quick, the memory cards fill up quick, and we're spending a lot of money on batteries. So having Arvig come out and put the internet in would be beneficial for a lot of reasons out there.
And we need it to run the cards, right?
To track the cards.
To track them.
To not, they'll be able to run them with the cards, but to track who goes in and out, we'll need wifi.
We'll need wifi, because they're gonna, they're gonna, they will come up with their number?
Right.
Oh.
And they'll go into a system.
Okay.
Within the gate panel. So we had discussed in the office about if we do let people from outside of city limits drop stuff down there, maybe they have to come in, well, they should come into City Hall here, and it's a couple hundred dollars to get a scan card in.
Two fifty.
Two fifty, something, right.
One-time use.
So something like that, maybe.
I'm just throwing numbers out.
You know, 'cause then, I mean-
Then they won't use it.
We'll stop, yeah, you know, 'cause do you think it's mostly outside residents or commercial?
I think there's a little of both. I know the residents who go down there use it the right way, but you can't even drive around the pile, the brush pile right now. I was over there earlier, they dumped it in the middle of the drive, and they don't care, they just dump and go.
And which, and there's huge logs and stuff, yeah.
Those aren't permanent.
No.
And that's what I saw on the back of the trailer.
Yep.
Yeah, well, and how convenient, I mean, we really are located kinda nice centrally for a lot of those businesses that are... So I, I think it's gonna be a mess and wonderful.
So that's, that's why we're not having it in use right now, just so we can come up with a good plan for what we wanna charge. I think maybe twenty bucks a card, and then that's your way in, and then outside residents.
Maybe twenty bucks a year?
And that's what we're wondering, if we do it yearly? And if we could add it to the, take a bill or-
Pay per. And that's still looking pretty low.
I, yeah.
You know, like, for example, Darren, my foster church, he just lives down the road from my shop. And he just said, you know, we go to Secod, we'll pay big, we'll pay big money to get Secod, he goes, "We're willing to pay for something."
Yeah.
Right.
We're fully there, and he's not a person that's gonna go down and drop a bunch of blocks. He's very meticulous about everything he does, and I don't even worry about him. I have no problem with somebody like that coming in and abusing him, because he's not gonna abuse it. It's these other, I, there are people like, I don't even know who they are, they drive across my house, that's like, great.
That's the thing, it's an accountability thing, if you have to pull up with a trailer full of stuff to get a card, we could visi- visibly see, oh, you got stuff that can't be dropped down there, we're not giving you a card.
Yeah, right, yeah, that's a good point. Because two hundred and fifty per time, you're thinking, well, but I mean, well, I mean, just-
I would say way more.
I think you would have to have a high price for commercial, it's a commercial. And if it's an outside of town resident, you know, I think, you know, maybe sixty per time or something like that.
Yeah.
I don't think we want commercial in there, though.
Do they have to make a decision on this?
They should, yeah. Because it could take them until next spring to get it scheduled and installed there. I mean, depending on the weather.
So what is the total, is it twenty-five hundred upfront, and then each month it's that? And then if we want to-
It's the three ninety-five and the seventy-one twenty-five each month.
With an upfront cost of twenty-five.
Well, I, I don't know about that, because we put-
Depending on where they put the wifi.
It would be a fire carpet to go burn. We have to take all those costs, and I don't think a hundred dollars is really doing it, I don't. I know, I, I can talk to my son, Adam, and make a row, I think they have to pay quite a chunk of money. Yeah, I don't know.
Daryl told me, what do you pay, I don't know.
It's probably a couple hundred.
Is it per pound, maybe?
Well, I know when I was gonna dump over there, you can't dump, I don't think wood or anything like that.
In Litchfield, no.
Yeah.
Or Pecor Coni, that one?
That is thirty-five dollars if it's recyclable, but otherwise, it's per pound.
And I think gold spring takes.
We have no trap pond, we don't have a pond. Anyways, back to the original thing, do we want to move forward with the wifi being run out there? If, if it's possible, they still have to come out and do it, and check and make sure. But do we wanna move forward with that?
I think if you can move forward, yeah, I, I don't think we should not do it, because it absolutely is a necessity if we're gonna track. We have to track, why do we if we're not tracking?
We still have, they still have to come and get cars.
It would be like a manual way for us to have to track it, yeah, it would be a mess. There's money in the refuse fund for it, I mean, so.
Or should we, or should we try it for a while, I mean, right now, there's coming, a lot of stuff coming in.
There's the brush, the leaves are gonna come in hot and heavy here soon. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, it'll be full this, this weekend.
I'm gonna get what you're saying from the cross, but if it's fifty dollars, and you get twenty people, maybe that's revenue there, too.
Well, then, you know, make that hundred bucks.
That will pay for the cost to install.
Yeah, make that hundred dollars, and, and, you know, is it a bad price, you know?
Well, and since we're, we're kind of in the middle of Marine Prairie, and you know, they're looking for places to dump. I mean, I'm gonna guess they're gonna pay it.
Well, if we're gonna have to expand or live, we're gonna have to have some money to do that, you know?
And then it's like, pretty acceptable, construction degree, it's also a perfect, it's on landfill.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Grass and the babies, and you're probably gonna have some serious stuff.
Yeah.
Not like that, too, when you go down, I've been down there, too, and someone's piled a car right there, too. Someone could get hurt or have damage to their vehicle, like, you know? People just don't think, they don't think that's a problem. I mean, mine, Tara.
Yep.
And I say start out high, and then you have to come over. Let's see how it goes.
We need a motion about the wifi, though.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead with the wifi.
Okay, um, update on the water main, we're still waiting to hear from the railroad after the latest comments were submitted, it has been about a month. So we should hear soon, but at this point, it's looking like a twenty-twenty-six project, not twenty-twenty-five, because it has to be advertised and bid out, and it's almost the end of October, so. That's that. Very. The pay applications are included. We've got the first one for Granite City Roofing. For ninety-nine thousand seven eighteen ninety-five. They should be done this week, they won't be here tomorrow, because it's supposed to be very windy, and they can't be up there, but they should be done by Friday, and then next week, the flat roof will be done, and that should only take about a week, you said. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
We have insurance paying some of that, don't we?
Yes, yes. Just over seventy. So, yeah. Yes, a motion for the Granite City. The next pay application is for the entrance ramp out front. Looks like eighteen thousand three nineteen seventy-five. Is the current. If I'm reading it right, that's for the, the work progress payment, that's actually through the end of September. So.
Well, somebody, Paul Allen, that said, I forgot something, that they did admit it, right? So we actually got a really good deal on them, you know? After they got bid, they were like, yikes, nice stuff, but-
Well, they sure did a nice job.
They did a very nice job.
They worked out really late.
Yeah.
They were here for a while.
Yeah.
Was there complaints about noise, you guys? Oh, there was.
Well, they, it was pretty dark when they were, it was getting dark.
It was very early in the morning.
Oh, because they were supposed to come in at dark.
But it, I think that was a different company, it wasn't ECI itself.
I never, was it, I mean, they were out before, I think before seven.
Um, it was on the- The demo crew was out at four AM.
Oh, yeah, okay.
But the concrete crew, they could've been gone by the time you went to bus. Um, but the concrete guys were there, like, late on that Friday.
Yeah. Because then, they're kind of in the street, and it was kind of dangerous. And they had cordial stuff, but it was-
One of them's not, and they come around, and he looks like, ooh.
No, it's not.
Okay, so now we need- And Carol's happy, she's so happy.
She loves her.
Yep. She's like, very happy.
All she has to do is a vacation.
Yeah.
And her mom are happy. Don't you get think of Martha from the tiny, we can do this pretty great.
Exactly. Okay, so you need to make a motion to pay the eighteen?
Yep.
Three one nine seven five. Okay, we have a motion, Jordy on the table, I have a second. Second from Steve, further discussion, if not, all the favors can try to say nine. Aye, close, motion carried.
All right, then, I have my monthly reports in there. Did anybody have questions on anything? These are carried over from the last meeting. Cindy, you said you wanted some more time to look at them. The railing for the entrance ramp. These are the most recent plans after they were out this morning. I wonder if our Christmas decorations we can do.
I'm on the same page.
This, like, the design of it will match what's on the fire escape, like, that type of railing.
Are they far off with being done, or do they require us to go yet, or?
To build the railing?
Yeah.
They're waiting for you guys to approve it.
Oh, so, okay.
Just, yeah, like, we just got the first drawing last Thursday or Friday, and this is the updated one after they met this morning here, so. I mean, they have to have it done by the end of the month, or-
Or lose it, huh?
So.
Ah, okay.
Does everyone like that, everyone like that?
I think they're very, very definitely. Okay, so we need to make a motion to approve the claims, if you're paid. On the motion? We have a motion to you, Cindy, do I have a second? Second from Jordy, further discussion, if not, all the favors can try to say nine. Aye, close, motion carried.
Does anybody besides Cindy want to go to the municipal league meeting tomorrow?
I'd like to go, and I know tomorrow is a conference plan that I was planning.
Yes.
But when I go to the meeting, so I would just explain to them why I'm not doing it.
So you wanna go?
I do.
Okay.
Aye. I guess I want to also, I thought I, I thought I would go, but I didn't.
Say, Martin, you're watching the kids, something.
I have to take a last walk, too.
Are you gonna go, Steve? No, okay.
Really? I don't know.
That's the only man, so I'm wrong.
Really?
It's considered the only man, there's a lot of first students came out of St. Martin.
Really?
Someone wore my robe, too.
There was also that Minnesota Association of Small Cities email that I had just gotten.
Yes.
Here, did anybody else, I don't need to, or I think it might have had an RSVP now that I think about.
It started today.
So, I think it's Thursday and Friday.
Oh, that Thursday and Friday, because I, I had talked about that, but then, um, uh, what's, oh, Friday, I'm going up to Kaden's, life-saving deal, so I'm not gonna go to that, because that's too much, too much of stuff this week, so I decided not to go. But it looked really interesting.
I'm going to drive it out right now, I'd like to do some stuff.
Okay, I mean, it's-
Looks really interesting.
It does.
I'm not gonna, I got too much on my plate.
First, here, we got the preliminary tax rate information from the county. So, as soon as I can find my cursor.
Fourteen percent, they're going up?
So. It's at fifty-four point six five. Let me see. Where? This. Um, for this year, the tax rate is forty-eight point oh-nine percent, so, and that's six percent of a tax rate increase. Which is still fairly low.
I like to keep it high, but it's like, that's what I call it.
I'm talking like the tax rate, not the overall percentage increase, so. I mean, like, that, it's under fifty-five percent, which is still pretty low, very low. I did not print out updated, like, sheets that I gave you last time with the revenue and expenditure ones. Each time a number gets updated, it takes a few steps in Banyan, so I like to do all the changes at once in there.
So the six percent is in all of the things that we've already said?
So, yeah, the, this is from the preliminary that was submitted, showing what the tax rate would increase. Which is separate from, like, the percentage of what the levy is. They're related, but they're separate things. So.
So next meeting, we're gonna work on this?
Do you wanna do that at the next meeting, or do some of it now? Or? Yeah.
I remember a little bit later.
You wanna be on with like seven?
Seven at the start, I told us we're gonna be, might be a little late.
Okay, so, well, I think we, we need to go for a little bit, so we have so much.
Yeah, I, so, let's do that, but can I just say quick, the mayor's report, I just.
Yeah.
So, actually, uh, I would tell.
Patty Gerstein?
Patty. Yeah, she approached me at a craft sale the other day, and she said, with the government shutdown, and some of the, the Medicare programs being cut, like, you care, you, these senior citizens don't know what to do, and a lot of them don't know how to run a computer. And she was asking me if we could do some kind of a. Class of program, or whatever you really call it, to invite this people that want a little bit of help. And, and she says she'd be willing to do it for free, and I said, well, that sounds like a really nice idea, I thought Dave from down there.
Yeah, part.
Yeah, I, I thought he should be involved in it, and I told her going to the library would be really ideal, it'd be more secretive, you know, and people could sit in there. Kind of meeting, and so I told her I'd bring it to the council, and it was okay, but I just kinda told her to work on it.
Who was it that came and talked to you?
Uh, Patty Gerstein from.
The Lions.
Margaret, old house. She's a Lions member.
She took the pictures.
All I heard was Margaret, so I wasn't sure if that's.
Okay, she's really active in the community, she really wants to give.
She has been there very long, she's very involved.
Very.
How years, maybe?
Well, the, she, she likes the Lions, she said, she, she gets, she gets, she gets a little bit flack in the community, I'm like, why, you're such a volunteer. She's very, very nice.
Yeah, she took all our pictures for National.
Who was, who's being moved to her?
She did say to me, but she said she's getting a little flack, so I said, well, I'll tell them off.
Well, it's like, it's going to be willing to take their own time and.
Yes, they're very kind, very kind, I think there's a lot of seniors that are scared, you don't know what.
You don't see anything, huh?
Yeah.
And that's for child, that, she had this couple that came here, and they didn't know how to run a computer, and by the time she helped them and walked them through it, they were so grateful, they're like, we don't know anything about this. And if the government doesn't have anyone to come sit down, like, we have to do something, they need help, so.
Well, Dave does sit with you, because he's a Medicare specialist, so he'll sit with you and go over all your options, that's what we do.
And I think she just wanted to get on the computer to help them, so, three of, well, two of them, I think it would really be a nice plan.
Well, it's nice for seniors to be able to get all the options that are gonna be presented, because we don't know what's coming or going.
Exactly. And she said she's gonna be leaving California pretty quickly, she's gonna call them.
Yeah.
Nancy.
She's from El Salvador, El Salvador.
She's a sweetheart, and you know, one more thing, I was invited to go to one of our church meetings, but they're talking about closing some Catholic churches around, is there, like, five, there's five Catholic churches that are, here are two that are, are together. And they had asked me to come to a meeting because it looked like, they're, it looks like they're trying to really close Campbell down.
That's what I heard.
Yeah.
We had said that at class.
Yes, and so, they had invited the mayor from Santa Augusta there to talk about their growth, so one of the members from the committee asked me to come there to talk about our growth. Which I didn't know, I was trying to be, you know, a puppet here, but it worked out really well, and, but I loved that meeting very deeply. Very, very depressed, because the one priest said he does not want to come to Campbell. So, and I did bring up the, the, I brought up the meeting that Margaret and I went to, up at the diocese, because when we were gonna build a library, we went to them and said, are you gonna ever close St. Anne? Because that would have been a perfect spot for our library, we could have moved our city offices down there, we could have had, like, senior dining continue. And we were told they would never close St. Anne's because of the proximity of St. John's. They all looked at me like I had horns coming out of my head, and I'm like, that's what we were told, and no one compared why I was told that, but. And we may have a big building, so, and I don't know if we still can afford to buy it, I still really should be buying it, because it would be dilated, but. It was doing well, and I was really impressed with that.
And I heard it was, it was probably not gonna close, because we're the furthest, we're the diocese down this way.
Definitely.
And so this would collect all the people that are from Watkins, if that closes, St. Nicholas.
Watkins isn't close.
No, but, you know, if St. Nicholas closes, and Pearl Lake is closing.
That is, Pearl Lake's already closed, they're.
So they're gonna come this way, and it would be more convenient for, instead of all of us holding up that way, you know, so.
But I, I would say they pushed that leg, what I heard, was Santa Augusta and Lexington to stay open.
To stay open?
That's what I heard, and they had one point brought St. Nicholas, Campbell into the, to the mix. What their goal, ultimate goal is, cause they had gotten a bid to move St. Nicholas Church to Main Prairie, which is over a million dollars. But their ultimate goal is to get a church built somewhere on Main Prairie, like, we. By the time that happens, and you close churches, I'm going to Watkins, I was like, why wouldn't I just go down to Watkins?
Well, then there's such great genius coming to the church.
Well, good.
I mean, there's, there's huge changes.
So I just want everyone to be aware that, that meeting happened, I was, I was really, it was, it was not a good meeting.
Well, Lexington, the school is, is breaking out of the scenes.
Yeah, they're doing a making there, they shut down one school, and that school's.
So, anyway, it's not a good change.
Back to budgets.
Um. What would you like to start with, look at?
What is our top priority here, what is something that we absolutely have? We can't defend anything, what, what would be the top thing, I mean, we probably all have.
What's that? I had, I had the ones at the last meeting. That were stapled together.
Is this a vote there?
It will, yeah. Um, the main things that I need to know are what projects you want to set funds aside for. Um, what should go in here for employee wages? Um, those are the two main things, so. Do you wanna go through projects? Okay. We'll do that, so. Um, first tab, City Hall. This was added after we met, um, Tammy and I discussing about. The condensation coming from the attic when it gets humid, and already rusting. What has just been painted. Um, Carol also noticed it last week when she came in. So, I don't know what the cost is to re-insulate, I just put forty-five thousand in here, I don't know, but, um. Whether it stays or gets pushed off another year.
Didn't we insulate, like?
It was before I started, I know that. Um, we did have new, like. Council table and stuff are out here, that was taken out last time, um, it could go back in as a placeholder if you want. Um. We have more money set here for next year for the comprehensive plan that we're currently working on. And. We've got some funds set aside for parks.
And, and, uh, and Tyler, you pointed out that last time, we all did this.
And you didn't wanna take money off of it.
Well, we were so hard.
And we should have taken it, we'll never get it back.
That was a good point, you know, cause it was, it's true.
Let me switch my display here. Hold on, one second, let me.
We missed the ball, I'm gonna grant her the ball.
Okay, now I can look at the screen, without, like, looking up there. Okay. So. Um, some of these next sections, so, like, infrastructure, um, that one. Wouldn't affect the tax levy, that's all figured on. Us doing a project in twenty twenty-seven, and getting. Um, USDA funding for it. We've got for streets next year, we have a total of seventy thousand, um, fifty of that would be. For. Like, from the capital improvement fund, and the remainder of it would be. From the Small Cities Assistance Fund, so that's why it's an odd number. Otherwise, it would be even. Um. This water main, I'm going to change right now, because.
Cause that's gonna, wouldn't you leave the water main, that's not going to happen?
That'll.
More than likely it'll be next year.
Next year. So.
Maybe that would be on next year's budget.
It'll be.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty twenty-six.
It would be on that budget.
So.
Was that, was that some of the other we're asking for grandling for, was that one of them, part of that?
We could, well, hopefully we can add it in later, like. Refund that, the bond that we're doing in with the, a USDA project, depending on.
That's what we're gonna talk about.
So, yeah, cause we don't wanna hold off on replacing it until.
No.
Cause twenty twenty-seven, that project being in twenty twenty-seven is just like putting it together, so really it would be in like twenty twenty-eight. What's the? Depending, yeah, so. Um. Um, I'll fix it later. Um, the sanitary sewer, these ones come directly from the sewer fund, so they don't affect that capital improvement fund levy.
That's why you're gonna nail it.
These are the ones that, well, they did the manholes, and they did the main, right?
They haven't done the main yet.
No?
They did the manholes.
They did do the manholes already, up by Elm Street, the ones that we had approved like almost a year ago.
You have the paper that you get?
So, I got the bill for that one, and that was in with tonight's stuff.
And that, oh, okay.
Yeah. So, uh, we also have for generators for the lift station in here. Again, that would be, like, from sewer funding, it wouldn't be part of the, like, tax levy, so. Uh, storm sewer maintenance, we had included, let's see. The seven thousand is what we applied for a grant for, that was submitted last week Tuesday morning at eight AM.
When will we know on that?
I do not know.
Okay, but that's included.
So, that is where.
They either funded or they don't, right?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we can always try again.
Right.
So. Um, we have twenty-five hundred in here for downtown beautification, to add to that. I think we've got like seven hundred and fifty-three dollars left, and they're from everything that we've put away, oh yeah, it's on my sheet here, seven twenty-three.
Here, well, I, I think that's worth the price.
So.
I really like the, the, you know, feeling you get when you see that all on, in our city, I think a lot of people commented, and it makes them look at Campbell in a nice aspect.
It's like we got a flag holder.
Yeah.
Well, and we do have three different ones now, but we have purchased, but she got some.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
What is the toll you get, just like, verify about that, maybe?
What's that?
What, the toll of all the flag holders that you have?
We have twelve light poles.
We don't, we don't have flag holders, I checked on that.
No, no, she need fans, she need fans.
No, and I asked you about the old ones that were on.
Yes, so there's, um, there's eleven.
There's eleven light poles, right.
But we would have to buy the brackets for them.
There's, I don't, there's some old ones downstairs, I don't know if they work or not.
So we can only do twelve?
Right, eleven, if you're doing on, on mouth drive, it'd be eleven.
Okay.
And twelve here.
That's what I need, but if we have to do brackets, right, then.
There's some, there's some downstairs, I just don't know if, what they're for, I don't know what they came off of, but they're in a bin.
Are they the thick?
There's a thick, like, fiberglass.
Like with the screw to tighten type thing?
But if we have twelve, that's, we'd be twenty-four, so we can do what they're back.
True, but I know there's a bunch of people that are, so they're interesting, Carl, I'll let you talk.
Um, the last one we have is two thousand dollars set aside for technology upgrades. Um. Anything you wanna add, take away?
What are we, for technology, what are we needing, I mean, is your desktop or computer, or?
Um, so, a laptop for Allison for next year is what we had talked about in our employee meeting. Um, Mitch's should be replaced next year, that one is over five years old now. Um.
So that should, that should cover it though, right, two thousand dollars?
Yeah, they must be like six hundred bucks a piece.
Um. It depends what kind of laptop you get, the one that Mitch currently uses, that one was, I believe, eleven hundred bucks, if I remember right, and that would have been five years ago, so, you know.
Well, I believe the budget of two thousand, we're at the two thousand.
So.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, I mean, like, this one was like, I don't know, under three hundred bucks, cause it only gets used every once in a while, so. Whatever, but.
Just tiny little, that's where.
Yeah. But then after, next year, we'll probably be on a cycle to, like, replace all the ones in the office again, cause they're.
Next year we must put more.
So, yeah. They don't last as long as they used to.
Mm-hmm.
So. Anything you wanna add, take away?
I don't, I don't think we wanna add, I think we should make that work.
That's my point, how will we last?
So. Let me. There. Um. Yeah. Just to make sure my columns are. Um, there. Do we need to put anything away to replace, uh. Like that twenty-twelve pickup at all?
No.
At some point, okay.
Not yet.
Or the top kick?
Yeah.
No.
You don't have to decide right now, just write it down as.
We shouldn't, after, at this point, but, especially since one o'clock this year.
Mm-hmm.
I understand we had to, we had to make sure it's something.
Okay, so.
If we need to cut something, that we don't think.
This all puts you at a hundred and twenty-one thousand five hundred, so, which is too much, I can tell you that. A hundred and twenty-one thousand five hundred. So.
That was what you came up with?
Adding those. That should be.
Everything that she just talked about.
Yeah. So.
So how much is, is, uh?
You have to get it down to. You have to get it down to.
The only thing I'm saying is, I know a lot of people want generators, if something came up, we could write generators.
Those are not in this amount.
Also that, okay, but that was the only thing I liked, that kind of.
So.
I would agree with that though.
But I'm just saying, if.
Yeah, yes, I would agree with that.
If you could write a generator, like that, isn't that.
Have you been meeting about generators? Next time, so we can have an idea? We have, no, no, because we met, the last time we met was in, when was it, August?
Four.
Races.
That was August.
Yeah.
Here we go. There we go, okay. Alright, so. To have everything at the same, the same percentages as it was for the preliminary budget, you can't go over this number there.
One hundred eight?
Yes.
One hundred eight.
And we're at one twenty one?
So, yes.
So what was the park funding at?
Seven nineteen, one hundred eight, seven nineteen, we're at one twenty.
What was the what, Tody?
Twenty one parks.
Or the attic remodel?
Attic remodel, yeah.
Like, I don't know if it's gonna be forty five, but I would put something there, whether you put five or ten, at least to save something.
I don't, I don't think it'd be forty thousand, but I.
I mean, what do we change on this, so we.
Don't you think with the new roof though, that'll help that?
I would hope so.
Yeah.
Yeah, but still with no insulation, you're gonna be.
It's not. I don't want to stay secure around the ductwork, but there's, whatever the right word is for it. Airflow gets through, that's why it, sweat's up there.
So is it something?
If it's. Can we wait on it though?
You can, it's been, it's been leaking for over ten years, so.
Yeah, so why don't we just wait?
I mean.
We really, we can't.
Well, I don't think it would hurt to get it clear what it's gonna cost.
Yeah.
Because if you find something ten thousand dollars, or say four thousand, I definitely don't think, I mean, I think it's worth finding out what it costs. So at least you know what we need the budget for, so we can either order or we can't afford it, and that, that's why I thought of that. Because we spent all this money making, we really don't want to get grabbed.
I'm sure there would be a.
Yeah.
You know, what can we do to prevent it happening, what's happening, maybe we don't need to spend, you know, maybe simple things.
Okay, so if we take that out. Okay.
Do we know how many square feet?
Yeah, that new roof might be huge.
How many square?
The whole building.
The whole building, right.
The length times the width is.
Right, yes.
I have the blueprints in the app.
So where does that, that's what.
So, that, if you take out everything for the insulation in the attic.
You took it all out or dropped it to third?
I took it all out.
Okay.
And then it dropped down to seventy six?
So.
So, so a large blown in insulation for twenty five hundred square feet is anywhere from three thousand to five thousand dollars.
So I don't, I mean, I said keep it off, I think we, we can have it, I mean, or put, maybe put seven thou, or eight thou, uh, ten thousand dollars.
I think you want to fifteen thousand.
I would say ten thousand dollars.
You don't want to climb up there.
No, you do not.
We have ten thousand dollars and it could like cost us.
Okay, so.
I was gonna put ten thousand dollars back in the way.
Okay.
Just cause we put the money there.
No, I agree, but I, I.
What cost actually, then we know what idea for a win, we do need it, but.
So. Um, we had talked about visit insurance, I have not gotten that quote yet, I did get our regular insurance renewal quote. Um, that was. Um. Let's see here, uh, twelve point one five percent for health and. Four point nine percent for dental, yes.
That seems like a lot.
So, we had, um, budgeted ten percent increase for health and four point five for dental, so. We're fairly close with the preliminary info.
So do we shop that one?
Um, we have in the past, everything has been higher, so.
Just asked.
We've looked at the state insurance plan, um, that requires, I think it's a five year commitment. And that was, at the time we had looked, it was twice, two to three times as much as what we were paying.
Usually you're like, a woman person, like Alan, we used to have this deal.
Yeah, yep, he does, he looks, but.
I don't know who you have now.
It's, we have AT group stuff.
Yeah, I mean, they, they're coming out with a bad.
So.
And then can you plug in, um, six percent for the employees?
Yeah.
Just plug it in and see what's.
Yep, yep, yep.
Will you say six percent for the employees, for raise?
Oh, gosh, I never.
Um, this assumes staying on the old wage scale, I had sent Kyle. Um, the updated info. Hold on here. Let me, see if this is referencing the right thing here. Hold on.
Probably doesn't know.
This one is forty. Um, let me see here. This one is. You know, let's see, I gotta put, Justin carry over either.
Well, they're good with computers, and that's a computer, all it uses is a computer.
That's all it is?
Yeah, they know. And then they play games all day, so, I mean, I'm not saying your grandsons, but why?
I updated these ones, I must have done the top. Okay, the other ones don't matter. Um, that probably changed, they had. Here, okay. Okay. That would be with six percent.
Oh, so where's it at here?
This is. The. Six percent in employee wages. So. The preliminary one had three. And then putting in eighty six, five there. Which the preliminary one had sixty four, five.
Also, when I, that, that maybe just took away, not that much. What's the difference?
So, right now, the final is lower than the preliminary one, by just over seventeen thousand.
It's lower than, so that's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Yep.
I feel better, yeah.
So.
I feel better, yeah, because, you know, because we really wanna, we wanna take care of, um. We wanna take care of you, but we just don't want to give too much. Sorry, we can't, well, we can't, we can't, if we would have said we'd be overtaxed, but we.
So that would de, bring your tax rate down to fifty two point nine percent, which is lower than that.
That's so good.
Preliminary one.
About two percent?
Which is lower than the fifty four.
And what is the increase per first?
So it was six, so it would be four.
It'd be four.
So are we saying increase per taxable?
Um, here's, on this sheet, it shows the difference.
Thank you, I love that.
In that column.
I like to see the difference. Yes.
So. Like this year compared to next year.
So this year compared to next year?
Is, is, um.
Oh, I see, okay.
On the right, sorry.
I was saying, I was thinking that eighty two, I mean, I would say on minus. So it's going down about quite a bit. Come on, I was.
So it'd be eight point four, eight point four, correct? Is that, is that eight point oh four, oh four?
That's so high.
That's, that's the change in the taxable market value, that's not, so that's the increase in property valuations. That's nothing to do with you guys.
So, but our rate for the levy would be what?
For the tax rate or for the?
Well, that's what we want, is the tax rate.
What, what, what is our tax rate for?
Yeah.
So the tax rate, it would be the fifty two point nine, is the tax rate?
Okay.
Or do you want the percentage increase of the levy?
Yes, percentage increase of the levy, I'm sorry, I'm not clear, right?
Okay, so that would overall would be twenty two percent?
Increase.
Yes.
That's high, no, that's too high.
So that's about.
Yeah.
Fifty. Fifty seven thousand more. In dollars. So, if you just look at the. Um, like revenue part. That's twelve point eight percent, if you include what's in the capital improvement fund, that goes up to twenty six. But overall, it's twenty two.
I heard with the, all the business phones, I think it's, you know.
The what? I didn't hear what you said to begin with.
The green, the green box girl, I've had a homeless more.
I didn't know.
There's, the last part of that came online and then there'll be, um, maybe a portion of. Fire track, otherwise the rest of the fire track would be the following year.
I'm just saying, because this is too much for our residents.
Cause the, it goes through June, I believe, the assessment year does. And this would be June of last year, not this year, so. You want to look at the projects again, or?
Well, are we, we'll have to cut back, um, you know, so six percent, which is a lot to fight.
But that's.
You know, I would fight, I think so, I, I mean, every little bit helps, you know? But, you know, so all the, all the. Um, you really can't cut on all the parks. And things we use for parks, and then the parks, and then, yeah, I mean, what do you, what do you say Travis on that? And even.
Like on what things?
Well.
We just don't need the budget, nothing's, nothing's been.
You know what I'm saying, yeah.
Or we drop it from two thousand.
Cause you know, you look at your budget every, every month and there's, there's, um, you know, a lot of parks. And I know that things break and you gotta get perks and stuff, but is there any thing we can cut in that area? That, you know, I mean, that we're not purchasing things that aren't necessary or not needed? Or is it all necessary and needed?
Uh, it depends on what, what happens, like those mowers and stuff, I'm sure that falls under parks and, I mean, that's, it just depends on.
I'm just asking.
What happens.
And I'm pretty sure you're pretty good at fixing all that yourself.
Mitch is good at it.
So, and parks are expensive, since COVID, parks are expensive, they're hard to work, I mean, I, I, I know what they are.
I'm just asking, cause I, I mean, I think we gotta look at everything, you know?
But things, things are valuable, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
That one, I don't want to be, I'm sorry.
Well, I, I did, I didn't say we gotta do it, I just said, what about that?
Can I hear you? We'll look at the projects again?
Um.
Yes, you can.
What's your goal, what's your percent goal that you want to hit?
I mean, I want to see my taxes go up twenty two percent, I put my house to sale, and that's a big increase.
But isn't the average right now somewhere between fifteen to twenty?
I know, but that's just ridiculous, it's a small town.
Look at, look at all the, like.
You didn't cut a lot in two years ago.
A lot of elderly people, it's not.
It's not the, the increase isn't the twenty two percent though.
That's what I asked, what is the?
You gotta look at the tax rate.
Yeah.
To get. That would be the percentage increase. So. Cause that is only, whatever last, what, four?
Fifty four.
Yeah.
It was like four percent, fifteen, yeah.
Uh, fifty four point six, so, yeah.
Last year was at forty.
So, oh yeah, I gotta go down. Good grief. Forty eight, there you go. So, it's.
And it's still, I would just.
About four percent increase.
And I'm just saying, a lot of elderly people are on a fixed income, that can't afford that.
Yeah, tell me about it. Yeah, I'm not a developer.
I mean, my taxes went up a couple hundred dollars last year, so another couple hundred dollars on someone that, that's a high income, it's gonna be very difficult for them. That's what I'm saying, we need to look at that, I mean, that's saying we can't fix things, we can't do things, we still need to think of our residents.
Right.
But we also need to think about too, I mean, I agree with what you're saying, we also need to think too, we can't just, so, so, hard. You know, that's such a responsibility.
You know, but if we tax our residents out of our homes and we have to post us, that wasn't something you could do there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I don't know if I, if I can talk to anyone that's ever happened with ours, I think they're, they, if they are, I think there's always a program for some people too. I mean, there's always something for them.
I don't know that there's a lot of programs to look with taxes.
I don't know what tax, yeah.
There's always many programs out there, it's becoming there.
And they're trying, they're trying to, like, they're trying to snap kind of.
I mean, that's saying that, that means here, do you know what I'm saying, when you think about our residents, give a lot of help with the home, right?
Right. And healthcare goes up?
Oh, I don't, I, I know, I, I know, and I had.
Do you think you'll be fixing any sidewalk and curving next year, Trav?
No, that, that'd be the easiest thing to cut out.
I mean, that's seventy five hundred bucks.
It's been five years since I've done anything on curbs and dutters.
Yeah.
And sidewalks and we're doing it this year, so. You probably put that to. Would you put it, I was gonna say, what, a thousand? I mean, just so there's something in there.
I mean, it could be some other sort of.
Right.
Improvement repair. Um, so that, I mean, obviously that gets down to twenty point seven, increased by two percent. At the next meeting, we should have info on, uh. Cleaning bids. So we can update that info.
Well, that's good, I, I ask.
Um.
To get, talk to people that could clean and what that would mean for difference.
Cleanly.
Like all.
Our facilities.
Yeah. And I, you know, you don't wanna cut your foot off and say that we get, we get somebody in here that were not happy.
Okay, but I was gonna say.
But.
Those bonds are.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. I just told Nicole a bit of the, and like, hey, we're friends, and I joined with her.
Yeah. She's in her week, isn't she?
Every other.
Every other.
Well, those are there. From recent sale.
I think she. I think she needs a month, cause there's about half of what there was.
Oh.
Do you wanna stop at that point? Um, so you can get to the school? Um.
Well.
So then I can update this, print it out. For the next one.
You, you guys probably didn't see what we just did, but we took out some money from curbs and sidewalks and I dropped another two percent.
Yeah.
You're depressed.
I just. Yeah.
So.
But we need to still do those things.
Yeah, we didn't take all of it out.
Trav's just gonna have to learn how to do it himself.
I can buy bags of concrete, it's no big deal.
You gotta know, other than.
Boy Scouts are gonna have to put a lot of manual labor in.
You know, parks, gonna drop that from two thousand fifteen hundred dollars.
For what?
The parks.
Like, in the projects, or?
But what do you give for fifty, what do you give a two thousand dollar?
It's just adding, keep adding to the funds.
Well, it's probably, it's probably.
I mean, we do have funds there.
Yes.
We've got.
Drop that from two thousand fifteen.
So.
I don't, it's not much.
Right?
Yeah.
You can take out this thousand.
No, I would still leave, cause we still.
And.
Worry about the most.
That lift isn't that bad, I think we don't.
So, I would still leave the thousand there and go dropping the two by. I mean, yeah.
All of them?
I would say, yeah.
Okay.
We're still putting money in there. Dropping.
What's the new station repair replacement?
That's. For the one behind the bathroom.
If for something to go bad.
So, we still, I think the funds still need to stay there for future.
I mean, you could take it. Out of the sewer fund, which is how the repair was done last time too. If there's any left there. For whatever the twenty-five dollars from each rental doesn't cover. You could increase the cost of the shelter rental.
Or make it even.
So. I mean, cause one twenty-five is cheap.
What we do.
Yeah. Interesting.
So.
Cause a lot of people use it.
It's busy in the summer.
You can leave it at one twenty-five for city residents and do it one seventy-five for non-city resident, I.
That's what, that's what they do in, in, at Kiff Mary Park.
Eden Valley does too.
I think they do.
Eden Valley, they, they jack it up for people. So, what they do.
It's hard to get places.
Because, I mean, it's.
Well, what, what they do is they do in their, um, they do residents and then they do in their fire district. Is a lower rate and then anybody else.
And you remember what you said, they, they, the fire district, they keep it a little bit higher than city residents, but then out of that area, they're, they're high, it's high.
Oops, sorry, shoot.
Because those, those are all tax dollars, and so why.
The electricity bill and the insurance, you know, not coming out.
No, no. Yeah, you don't have, the, the composters are gonna factor in if we give in.
That's all out of the refuse fund.
That's all of the refuse fund, okay.
Yep.
Well, I think that's a good idea to raise rates on the, on the shelter.
Hours, then?
Yeah. Yeah.
How many downloads does you think you said?
A lot.
Some duration.
It's a lot of people that, like, we have family in the area, but they're from wherever.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good idea.
We don't charge for lions, obviously.
I know.
And what about the library?
That's okay.
Charge for that? Cause it's only a fifty dollar deposit right now. And they get it back.
Wow.
So, it's technically free. Which not a lot of people know about it, I don't think it's like advertised.
Dollars, twenty-five dollars, point a dollar.
You just don't have to clean it, but like.
So, there should be some.
Well, they should be cleaning it.
Well, they should be.
But, yeah. We've never had any issue.
So, you can rent the library?
Library, community room.
Yeah, for free.
For free with a fifty dollar deposit. I know the last time we talked about it, it was because it wasn't like a profit.
Why would you rent?
Yeah. And the lights go on.
It's because of all the donations and grant funding that were.
We're gonna, that's why we did it, too, yeah, we wanted to.
But you also said that you would revisit it.
Yeah.
After it'd been a few years, it's been five.
Yeah, charging it like a dollar.
No, I don't think that's mattered at all.
And still charging thirty-five, maybe fifty-dollar refund, twenty-five dollar. Usage.
Right.
I mean, it's not a lot, it's something.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Right.
What would you propose for the shelter?
What is that right now?
Right now, it's one twenty-five, but with tax, it's one thirty-four, it's unchanged.
Well, I would, I would propose one fifty.
I'd say at least twenty-five dollars more.
Yeah.
Are you saying for residents, local residents, or all time residents?
Well, we're, right now, we're charging for everybody one twenty-five.
Same.
So, I said for residents, I think we should charge one fifty. And a one, maybe one seventy-five for, for the fire district.
Do you wanna do that?
Anything higher than that? I don't know.
We don't, I, I.
I would just leave it at resident and non-resident.
Yeah.
Resident, non-resident.
Okay, but he's too confusing.
They would be starting either.
So, they're one seventy-five for non-resident and then, um, uh, one, one fifty for resident.
And a fifty dollar deposit?
Huh?
Fifty dollar deposit.
Yes, yes. Don't you think that's, I don't think that's bad. What do you, what do we pay for Kiff Mary Park?
I don't know, I've never rented it.
We, we.
I've gone to it.
I'm just trying to think if resident and not.
Uh, it's seventy-five for the community room and then you get fifty back?
Yeah, so twenty-five dollar fee ultimately. I mean, it's not a lot, but it's, well, I would say it's well worth the twenty-five dollars, I mean, they're gonna get fifty and they're gonna be back. That's something for the.
And, uh, do I use a hundred fifty bucks?
Oh, thank you.
A hundred fifty bucks, okay, for residents. Cause I think there's a charge higher for non-resident.
But.
So, yeah. Um. And then the library though, are you, you know, because. We, are we gonna charge though for like the legacy, the legacy, um, like the principal library, because we, we are nonprofit?
I don't think you guys have been like, really. Booked it a whole lot for being honest.
We're, we're, we're booking night.
Nobody's booked it for months.
For the meeting.
Yeah, I know you do like the book sale, we wouldn't obviously. Charge for that, but.
And then our meeting is once every three months, so.
But it's for the library.
Yeah, it's friends at the library.
We're talking to the library, we're talking to the library.
We don't.
Yeah.
So, and, but what about the legacy events, like she has events that record original library.
No, cause it's a library event.
Those are libraries.
Right, yeah.
I don't ever charge her enough, and she sends me those like months in advance. I have like twenty, twenty-six, I already have books for her.
And we're not gonna allow people to, like, make money in there, we're still gonna.
No, they can't, because then it becomes a taxable use.
All right, I, I think that's a good idea.
So, twenty-five?
So, you know? Yeah?
Okay. Collect the fifty. Now that.
And you said that.
With the library meeting, for just a, a shower or meeting or something bad. Yeah?
Then they, Seaman Bestin has a hidden lake.
Yeah, that's about the.
Yeah. That's one seventy-five.
And there is no, in, in our, internal.
Okay, just one seventy-five. And they don't have kitchen, I don't think they'll chair, but the other one does. Well, it's not much.
Do we want people to be able to reserve the shelter up in Heritage Park Edition? Well, you'd have to go put, what they do in Litchfield is they hang up like reserved signs.
Okay.
On. In there.
There's a picnic table, right?
Yeah, there's a picnic table.
I don't, I'm just asking.
Do you have enough there, I'm kinda like.
I mean, I don't.
I. I wouldn't until the park is fixed, but.
Yeah.
That's, that's me personal.
But, it'd have to.
No, no.
Okay.
It's not. It'd be nice if we had a shelter there, you know?
It would. All right.
Okay. I will update those. And then get the. Fee schedule updated, so that can be adopted before the end of the year. Okay. Anything else?
No. Um. Is there anything else? We are talking at the next meeting, though, I think we should be in the room where we're gonna have that life-saving.
Yep.
Reception for Kate and Bowman, who saved her grandpa. And we have a little reception at four thirty before the meeting.
Before, I mean.
Like a little proclamation, or maybe a little, like, certificate or something.
So, we can do it before the meetings overnight?
Yeah, at four thirty.
So, if you wanna cover.
Was that here?
Yeah.
Yes.
Are you doing like refreshments and stuff?
Yeah, those days and so on. That's the third of November. Not a big deal, but just something to recognize by the city.
Yeah.
She did that. And so we got, maybe the fire department, no, I think people, what are the papers?
Is the township doing anything at all?
I don't know. Yeah. I can, we could, that may be.
Cause it was in there.
You know?
Yeah, I was just thinking, since it was in the township, are they doing anything at all, or?
I, I know that the county is doing something Friday night. They're doing a little life-saving award thing up on Friday night that put that, probably behind, I see that, that little, um, place. So, you should probably send an invitation to the township. And tell them that we're doing this. I don't, I think we should. And if they have anything to, to do or say about it, that would be nice. And then the fire department, let's send an invitation to the fire department. Cause they have a meeting. Well, they won't have a meeting, you know, they just have training. Cause it's, yeah, cause they, they don't have anything, but if you really announce it. Okay, I just think we should, because you know, those are kinda special things.
Great, you're adjourned.
It's nice to recognize our county here at White House.[1776.71]